Good evening. Welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. Natty, if you would, do the roll call, please.
Yeah. Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Asamurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up is the approval of the agenda and adjustments and announcements for the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements: November 15th at 5:30, it's a Wednesday, the school board will have a development training here in the community development, community development, community room. November 21st at 5:00 PM, there'll be a school board listening session in the family center. Also, November 21st at 5:30, the school board will have a work session here in the community room. November 23rd and 24th, there'll be no school, it's a holiday, the district center will be closed. November 28th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. And December 12th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence to report tonight.
Thank you. Next up is communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. It looks like we do have one person that wanted to speak, and just based on the topic, Joanne, if you're here, you can come on up if you want to work your way up. Just based on the topic of conversation, I just want to take a minute to inform and/or remind anyone that's speaking and the board members as well, but there's federal laws, state statutes, and district policies that prohibit public discussion of information or specific incidents in regards to staff, students, under data privacy. And we had this conversation, so in general terms, if you would, well, you can be specific about your name, but general terms about your topic, but name and address and then go ahead and address the board.
Joanna Stark, but I refuse to say.
On to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the October 10th and 24th school board meetings, the October 17th work session, the personnel report, and the treasury report, treasurer's report from August 2017. Get a motion to move that forward, please.
Salute.
Natty?
Second.
Hala, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is discussion reports and information items. These will be reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Laura, you want to go first?
Sure. I'll try to keep this brief. I attended a 916 board meeting. That's the Special Education District that we are in collaboration with other districts to be able to provide special services for a variety of things that are more economical to do as a group rather than as individual districts' programs and so on. I also had numerous conversations and communications with constituents, and I also had a lovely lunch with Hala over here, and thank you much, very much for that. So I think that should pretty much cover it. Oh, and the board, and the chair meeting prior to this, to this meeting.
Thank you. Hala?
All right. So, because of deferring last time, and it goes back. So Citizens for Safer Streets, it was an important meeting to address those issues, and I'm glad that we got things moving. I had a meeting with the superintendent, attended the academic lettering ceremony, talked with community members and constituents, attended the listening session where I am still, still waiting for members of the public to come talk to us. We had a work session and the alumni scholarship dinner, and then conferences at the high school, and then lunch with Laura. Thank you for that.
Conferences.
Okay. Natty?
It's hard to remember back to our last meeting, and then we ended up deferring. But a lot has happened over the last couple of weeks and have had a lot of conversations with community members, with Superintendent Kelly and various people around the district. I did attend the Alumni Scholarship Foundation Dinner, which was great. It was great to celebrate past alumni of distinction and come together, and I just see some of the really incredible things that have come out of our schools. Went to a football game, went to some info sessions, and again, lots and lots of conversations in the community.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, I also attended the listening session with Hala, and as she said, nobody was here to talk. We do welcome public to come and speak with us during that time. Also attended the work session following that and some of the final football games of the year. I also attended the Alumni Foundation Dinner, and same thing as what Natty said, it's just, it's a great evening to see, to see all the people to come together and especially the dollars that go to support our youth that are going on to college. Also attended Columbia Heights High School conferences and the college night, and they had a really great turnout. There were so many colleges present, it was really good to see that as well. Also attended the Highland Turkey Bingo PTO event, and as with anyone, everyone else at the table, we had been in conversations with community members about the bond specifically.
Okay, thank you. I also attended the alumni dinner, it was, I thought, a really nice event. Conferences here at the high school as well, the chair meeting prior to this, and again, as everybody else has said, lots and lots of conversations with a lot of different people out there. I do need to, before I let you go to report, is just back up and summarize for the communications to the board for the record that we had one person come and speak, and they had questions regarding bullying, the policies, and specifics about student enrollment, and we've directed administration to follow up with them, so. Okay, and next up would be the superintendent's report. Megan Gesson, you do?
I do. Mr. Chair and members, Director of Finance and Operations Christine Carr and I met with the auditing firm today to discuss the progress of the district audit, and the end-of-the-year audit will be an agenda item in an upcoming November meeting. Director Brian Hennekenz and I have had multiple meetings regarding the current and future plans for the TIES organization, and a school board member, Hala Asamurai, and Director Hennekenz and I will be attending the TIES annual meeting tomorrow morning. Be a very important meeting where the whole discussion of future planning will be taken up, and we will put this on a November meeting to update the board. I would like to offer really a special thanks to all who planned, implemented, or attended the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Foundation Alumni Scholarship Dinner. It was our 10th annual, and as always, it was a great event, and as member Louis has already said, it raises so many dollars for students to be scholarships that, thank you to all that participated and support that event on a yearly basis. With some other good news in the district, and I would like to thank Pilgrim Dry Cleaners. They donated more than 170 new or slightly-used coats to the district, and these will be distributed to our students' early childhood through high school. And the school social workers are also distributing along with those coats, boots, hats, gloves, and mittens to students who are in need of them in the upcoming weeks. Kristin Stunkel actually made that collaborative partnership happen this fall, so want to extend a thank you to her, although she's not here tonight. I want to remind parents that kindergarten registration nights are coming up, and wanted to make sure that parents of children who are five years old honor before September 1st of 2018, that they're encouraged to attend one of the, one or more of the kindergarten registration nights at our elementary schools. Highlands is coming right up right away, so I want to emphasize that the Highland Elementary Registration Kindergarten Open House is November 28th. North Park is Wednesday, January 10th, and Valley View is Thursday, January 11th. The Columbia Heights High School Theater Department is presenting Jane Austen's Sense and Sensibility. This week, actually, they will be doing their performances at 7 o'clock on Friday, on the 16th, the 17th, and the 18th. They've been working hard, so anybody out there that is looking for a great play to see, please join them. I too have attended multiple meetings and with school board members over the past few weeks, and football games and other things that were deferred, but I won't go on with the list, but I want to thank all the members of the board and for those of you that have in the audience that have met with me for your time.
Thank you. Next up would be the building vision card for the high school. Principal Robleski.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here this evening to, with Principal Robleski, and he'll introduce our two wonderful students who have joined us as well, to present the Columbia Heights High School Vision Card. So of course, this is part of our strategic plan. Our mission in Columbia Heights is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And in, in putting together this presentation and looking at our strategic directions, we always base that presentation on our core values. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Principal Robleski, and you can introduce your students as well.
Thank you. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, as we talk about our strategic plan for the high school, and we've talked about the roadmap that we follow and the goals that we have, we always have an opportunity at the end to talk about the student successes and achievements that we've had. And I thought, what better to do that and have two of our students talk about the student successes and achievement that we have? So before we continue on with our presentation, I'd like our students to introduce themselves.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, and Superintendent Kelly. My name is Manny Alvarez, I'm a senior at Columbia Heights High School.
Good morning, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kathy Kelly, and members of the board. I'm Kira Greenfield, and I'm also a senior.
So tonight, as we start our presentation, we'll be going over some data points, and one data point that I wanted to point out is our enrollment trends. If you look at our enrollment trends over the last five years, you've seen a steady tick upwards to a point where we've increased since 2013, over 100 students. We are excited about the growth that we've had at the high school, and I think that's attributed to the support of the community and our programming and the school board of some of the programmes we'll be talking about tonight. As you can see, this is our student body demographics. It has not changed over the last two years, as well as our special populations have stayed consistent. Tonight, we're going to be looking at our strategic directions of our strategic roadmap, and as we start, I'm going to flip ahead to the next screen. You have the slide in front of you, or if you can see, it's projected. I'm going to point out a couple of points of each strategic plan and talk about those. If you have questions at the end, by all means, please ask them. But tonight, I want to talk about A2, which is our staff, the high school staff actively engaging in the PLCs for questions monthly at a minimum. I'm going to get into a little bit more of that later in a presentation of a slide called Highlander Time, which is an opportunity for our students to get planned interventions of work time with our staff, as well as teachers having PLC time as well, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then I'm excited to talk about the presence and the use of the classroom embedding 21st century learning. As you can see, it's at a baseline. We're excited to see the school district initiative and the voted levy by the members of our community to support this technology level where 9th through 11th graders have Chromebooks in our classrooms and are able to use the 21st century skills that present us today. So I want to thank the community and the school board for passing that levy and making this a possible opportunity for our kids to compete in today's world. On the next slide, I'd like to point out the tiered interventions for behavior at the high school and our AVID program, as well as parent involvement. Our presence, multi-tiered interventions for behaviors, I think I've talked, over the last five years, we've implemented a culture and climate change at the high school with real expectations. And I think as we've seen over the last five years, we've seen a climate and culture change at the high school, as well as a behavior change at the high school. And with this climate and behavior change, we've seen academic success. So we are excited with the continued support of our real expectation, the core values of what we live with over at the high school, and are excited to continue to see the success of lowering behavior incidences and the continued support of one another in our community as well. Also, I'm excited to see the support of our community and the school board in vertically aligning our school with AVID. And AVID school-wide and district-wide, as that vertical alignment piece allows our students at the high school to not, at the high school, develop that school, but in the lower grades, develop that school and be able to implement that school and strategies as they do their work. Parent involvement, that's an area where we continue want to focus on. We have a new management systems called Synergy and ParentView, so that's in, we're in our second year of ParentView. We continue to see an increase of our parents using ParentView, and we also have talked to our parents in our Action Committee Group. They have talked about, in the last two years, focusing on what's an involved parent? How can I get involved at the high school? And what we've heard from parents is they like to package up a night instead of coming for three different events on three different nights. Our parents have asked to package up a number of events one night. So for example, I believe last week, we had parent conferences, we had the college night that was talked about earlier, and we also had our National Honor Society induction night. We had all three of those combined together. We've seen a direct increase in the parent, at the number of parents showing up at our induction ceremony, and the number of parents at conferences, as well as visiting all the college representatives that were there that night. So we've heard our parents talk about the involvement and what they need to be more involved at the high school, and so we continue to listen to our parents and move forward. Under our participation, we've had a consistent baseline of student participation in our athletics and activities. We're excited to see the work of our new activities director, Mr. Harris, and our activities manager, Mr. Henderson. So we are very excited to see the growth that we will have in that department as those two grow it. The next area that I want to talk about is our, our testing proficiency in our MCA scores. As I sit before you, the scores are not where we want them to be, and as I've said before, we have a saying at the high school, it's okay to admit where you're at, it's not okay to stay there. We are not happy with our scores, but in the slides, our next two slides, you are going to see that the high school, since 2013, has had positive trends in proficiency and getting a positive increase each year. This has happened with our reading scores in the MCA for our 10th graders, as well as in our next slide, we have also done that with our math. As you look and you can see in 2017, I presented to you last year that this was an anomaly. We thought it was an anomaly, that this was one test that we had some concerns with, the MCA. We were able to look at another standardized test, and we did not see this drop as we did in this MCA, and we believe this is an anomaly. I'm going to address that concern with that 8% drop in our goals for this year. The one thing we are very proud of at the high school as we prepare our students for college and career readiness is the partition, participation in the ACT test. That test has now become a volunteer, students can volunteer to take that test, they do not have to take that test. We are excited to, as you can see on that slide, 70% of the students participating, we believe, we're closer to 100% of our 11th graders all took that test regardless of what their college and career choices are. We are excited that our students and our staff have taken that step to challenge themselves and take the ACT test. As you look at the other thing, our referrals and out-of-classroom and suspension incidents, I can tell you right now that we are a decrease from last year at the same time last year with this, and we continue to see that drop. We are happy, we will not, we won't continue to be happy, but until we see a significant, significant drop at the high school, but we know that our kids are keeping it real. And then, as we look at this last slide here of our strategic plan, it talks about our AVID students and our AVID cohorts. In that group, it's over close to 100% of college acceptance of the students who participate in the AVID cohort. So we can see that AVID is working at the high school. These are the goals that we have set up for this school year for the high school. I'm going to start off talking about the PLC student intervention time. That is what we call Highlander Time. That happens two times a week, every other week, from 8:20 to 8:55, and students get an opportunity to meet with their teachers, get caught up on their homework, prepare for a test or a project, and get time to study with, with their peers. So this has really been a huge benefit at the high school. We've done some data analysis of students taking advantage of this, and we are very satisfied with our results of the students that are taking advantage of this and using their time wisely. The other benefits for Highlander Time for our teachers is that PLC piece. It gives them time to align their curriculum, they're able to collaborate and now look at student data after they've aligned their curriculum, and we're able to embed the interventions that we have in place to support our school-wide goals in literacy and other programs and interventions that we have. It gives our teachers that time. The last piece, which is very exciting to see as well, is it gives students the opportunity who might not be able to get to school before or after, have this time to work with their teachers. So this is a very exciting initiative. We've just met with our teachers and our students, and everybody is speaking very highly of the program. And if anybody's listening tonight, students, make sure you sign up on your Google Classroom. Our math goal, as you look at, our goal is to increase 12% in our math proficiency. That number is a highly, highly, highly significant increase, but what I wanted to address is, in both, we have a math and a reading goal. Both those are goals, we've looked at it, they would be a 3.7% increase. Due to the fact that we saw that blip earlier of 8.3%, we've now adjusted our goal that we believe because of that blip, we should be able to make that 8.3 up and then have our goal of 3.7. So that's where the 12% comes in. We believe with the hard work of our teachers and our students, we'll be able to hit that goal. And these are the interventions that we have in place at the high school. We have the college readiness math program that's been implemented. We've had the University of Minnesota work with our staff in staff developing, embedding math talks into the curriculum. We have the AVID strategy that we've used this year, last year and this year as well in marking the text. They are now using that strategy and story problems and helping kids make that transition to the MCA testing, as well as ACT testing on math problems. They've also created the mastery quiz model, and now they're able to take that model and use to analyze the data. And we also have teachers supporting our students in the homework center, and a great program at the homework called Check and Connect, another support that we have for our students. We also have the ability to have the MCA target group intervention that is done approximately a month and a half before the test. Again, you'll see our literacy goal is a 3.7 increase in our proficiency. These are, most of these interventions mirror one another. You can see that we have that college seminar literacy class. We've also had professional development for our faculty for implementing reading strategies. So we have a lot of interventions and a lot of support from teaching and learning, and our own teachers presenting on making sure we attain these goals. We also have a growth mindset goal, and this is to increase the number of students that attend four-year colleges. We've implemented some college nights that you've talked about. We have a college application night as well, where we had staff in the evening help students and parents fill out college applications. And tomorrow night, we have a financial aid planning night as well. These are the programs or interventions that we have in place for our students, but this hasn't been made possible without, I think we've seen a mindset change in the high school and the pendulum shift because of the AP Small School District of the Year Award, and I will also talk about the U.S. News &amp; World Report Silver Award. When you challenge your students and you challenge your staff to attain goals and challenge themselves, we can only see by those two awards that aren't applied for but are picked by those institutions, that you can see that when you get that success, it changes how you think you can do. So our staff and our students have the faith in one another that with support, we can make this happen. And you can see that all these interventions that we have in place are making a difference at the high, difference at the high school. And then our technology goal. We're excited for the personal learning initiative that we have, where we have Chromebooks in our classrooms. We have students using them in the Google classrooms to sign up for Highlander Time. We're also using our technology to put our ramp up to readiness, our college and career readiness curriculum, online through Google Classroom. We also have the staff development of technology integration, where so far this year, teachers have been able to get PD on Google Calendars, Google Classroom, and Moodle, another management system. Google Classroom and Moodle are management systems for curriculum to help support teachers technology-wise. And the other goal that we had this year is for the use, students to have the student view, to look their grades up and to track their academic success. Right now, we have 84% of our students on student view, and that's with a reminder that our 12th graders are not having the Chromebooks. So that's right on track of what we, we're excited with those numbers. We are looking to be at 100% by the end of the year. And then our equity goal, this, for the last couple of years, two years, we've been working with the IDI, or the Intercultural Development Inventory Framework. Our staff has taken that assessment, we've worked with a equity consultant, and we're changing our mindset and our skill set just as we talk about, everybody has the opportunity to go to college, a four-year degree. We also are looking at the equity lens and how we can support all, all of our students at the high school. This is an add-on goal, this will always be a goal at the high school. Our goal this year is to hit 85% of our students' graduation rate. That is ahead of the state percentage. We have a number of interventions to help support us and attain that goal. Some successes from 2017 in that data is, the state was 82.2, ours was 83.6, that's why we have the goal of 85. And you can see that our students in the different cells have exceeded the state average in double digits in some cases, and we're excited to see the continued work of our staff and students. This is attributed to all the interventions, and I believe some of the equity work we've done as well at the high school and our district.
Just a note and a reminder that the graduation rate is always one year behind because the calculations from the Department of Education don't come out until late December.
Now the exciting news. Last year, we were very excited and humbled by the College Board picking Columbia Heights School District as an AP Small School District of the Year. This year, we were notified that U.S. News &amp; World Report has picked us as a Silver School Award. We're excited with that. You can see our rankings, our staff and our students are very proud of that. They've worked hard for that, and I'd like to congratulate them as well. Now for the fun part is, everybody wake up, we have our students who are going to talk about our student achievements.
So here we have our wonderful AP scholars, one of them is me. We have 13 AP classes at the high school, and to be an AP scholar, you have to pass at least three of them with a score of three or higher. So this takes lots of hours with staff and students, out-of-class study sessions, in-class, intense homework, and this is like a really high achievement that a large amount of our students have achieved. So these are Scholastic Art Awards, 16 students. 16 students were awarded 26 art awards, so there is gold keys, silver keys, and honorable mentions. So in the art world, this is like the state tournament. We go through all these steps to get these awards, and it's really fun. We also got the highest possible ranking for Ayana, Isabella, and Nathaniel in their solo ensemble contest. And for our Spotlight on Scholarship in the Theater, we received Outstanding Performance in the lead role in Little Shop of Horrors, and you guys should come watch Sense and Sensibility Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
For athletics, our, last year, we had our boys' basketball team make it to state, and we placed fourth in the state tournament. And we also had three wrestlers, including myself, who placed fourth of the state tournament. We also had Ben Bardell go into state for diving, and Sam Alexon also for synchronized swimming. And we've also had Ji-Hong win a United States essay contest, which is, that's the first time in Heights that's ever happened, which is really exciting. And then we've also had our strikers team, the second year, go to state, which I hope, well, I know it didn't work so well this year, but it was really fun.
So our future, vision for the future, as we continue to see the academic activities and athletic success at Columbia Heights, our staff and students will continue to challenge themselves with the academic rigor. Our school is continually focusing on recruiting and retaining our students, and we will continue to have the college and career readiness focus for all. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Maddie and Kira, you did a great job. It's always fun coming talking, and wrestling season is firing up pretty quick.
Mm-hmm. We start next week on Monday.
Okay. Well, you got going, Kira.
Basketball started yesterday.
Yesterday? Well, good luck to both of you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just also, as a parent, want to say that I knew it was Highlander Time tomorrow because it came in the phone call on my drive here. I have hands free, just for the record. And that's really helpful for me to then remember to ask about it, and so encouraging other parents who are here to, make sure you listen to that voicemail from any of the schools you get. I think the, it's tempting to just delete it, but take some time to listen to it and hear what's going on, so it's helpful to me. Thank you. And it would be interesting, just from a school board perspective, to hear how those FAFSA nights and the college things turn out, so maybe even something in the updates would be great to hear about, how kids are doing, our parents come into that, different things like that, it'd be great to know.
And also, as a parent, I hear about Highlander Time directly from my kid. She loves it, and so, you know, this is just anecdotal. We're loving it. I hope it continues to be successful, and I hope it works for all the kids and staff.
Can we ask them, what do you guys do during Highlander Time?
I personally, I usually like to go to Mr. Townsend's off-room. So I have a TV media class, so I'm the anchor for the school news. So I, we have projects that we have to put together for the show, and I like to edit and take my time because I really want to make a good product.
That's great.
A lot of my AP teachers have used them for early study sessions, so then we can get like a review session before the test the next class.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for taking time to be here.
I just want to push the teacher part right there. I really like too that the teachers get a chance to have that time within the day to work together and collaborate, because if you don't provide it, it's hard. It's hard for teachers to do that, so I just want to.
Oh, that's good, sorry.
Put that in there. I'm really glad that's happening too.
Well, you two can go.
One more time.
Do you want to come up here and get a picture, Mom? Just at the table, do you want to come and get the picture? Too embarrassing?
I'm standing next to him. Okay. Next up is new suspended and deleted courses for 2018-19.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here this evening with Principal Robleski and Principal Burkis. Our representative from the elementary faction was ill this evening, so was not able to attend to join in, to have conversations and propose to you new suspended and deleted courses for the 2018-19 school year. So of course, Columbia Heights creates worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation is based on our core value of excellence. So this evening, we'll present to you information, and then I will be back on November 28th to ask for approval of the proposed course changes that we present this evening. So we'll begin with Columbia Academy new courses.
Yeah, so the first thing we'll talk about is math. We currently are running some courses that are actually for high school credit, and one of the things that we are going to be moving towards is changing that a little bit so that our emphasis remains at the middle school on the middle school curriculum, which is a, an introduction basically to linear algebra. So we'll go deeper on that, and to do that for advanced students, we will have a course called Advanced Math Concepts. And this will basically be taking algebra and going deeper to set a very, very solid foundation in a key area that they're going to need to build on in all their future math courses. We will still have the possibility for those students who are very advanced of being able to travel to the high school if they are beyond this, but our courses that we will teach will end with, this will be the highest course, this will be our course that really sort of is the capstone that, again, solidifies that base in linear algebra. In addition, we're very excited to be, this year, piloting a new engineering curriculum. For years, we ran a curriculum that had been developed by one of our star teachers. She was magnificent at what she did. Unfortunately, she and her husband moved, and when she left, that was hard on our, on our program. And so we have gone to a nationally recognized program called Project Lead the Way. It is a very rigorous program. It's a, used across the country to prepare kids for STEM courses, for courses in engineering. We are, this year, teaching design and modeling as a pilot, and we would like to implement that fully. It's going very well. Our teachers are very enthusiastic about it. Our students are learning a lot, and I believe it's going to be a new, very solid piece to our curriculum in the middle school. And excited about teaching and learning, bringing that to us, Project Lead the Way. It will solidify that component in our, in our building.
I'll just add that, as part of the pilot, last year, we were able to attend Robin Still Middle School to really get into the classrooms and observe Project Lead the Way in action with middle school students. Principal Burkis, myself, and a team went, and we were really convinced by the staff there to, to pilot and dabble with it, and within the first quarter of school, we're seeing really positive results. So that brings us to the next grade level.
So we would like then, next year, to be able to add an additional Project Lead the Way course. There's different courses that you can use. This one, obviously, would fit very well with our strong robotics program that we have after school. Mr. Kennedy is our robotics coach and math teacher. He's also teaching Project Lead the Way. So he would be one of the teachers for this next year. We have lots of kids that are very interested in robotics, so we feel like this would be a natural next step for us from the design process, which is kind of the introductory course that students are taking this year. So next year, this would be for those students who have completed this introductory course on design and are ready for the next step. So then, just again, we are changing our math process there. So geometry, this would be the last year that we'll be teaching geometry as a high school course in the middle school. From this point forward, then we will be sending students that are ready for it to the high school to take that course.
Let's take a look at the high school.
So next year at the high school, we are looking to implement a full year of English 12. We've had in the past where it's been a one semester course, and now we are looking to add a little bit more of an intense course so that we have another half a credit to our English program and for our seniors. So we're excited that they'll have the research piece, they'll have some extra reading selections, and we are just, as well as, they'll still have that career piece in English. So we're looking to add on with the and.
And this course would bring us to be comparable with surrounding high schools and keep us in line with our, with our goals of college and career readiness.
We're excited to present an American Indian Studies. As you can see, we believe that we've had some excitement over the last couple of years in our school system, looking at our Native American history. Minnesota is rich with a tradition of Native American history and studies, and we thought we were able to make that connection at the high school with our students, with the Native American interest that we have at the high school.
And this course would be one of the elective options for students, would not be a required course.
We're all excited to introduce the Highlander Band. This is a, a new level class, a band for our students. It will extend their instrumental skills. This program will be able to add movement marching and choreography to the band, and enrollment for this course will be based on additions and recommendations.
Currently this year, as you know, we started our early college program, and we're offering these courses. There's, it's really four courses, since Environmental has the course and then plus the lab, they're official college classes, so the lab is separate, if you think back to college days. So building upon what we have, Principal Robleski and I and the team recently met with the Inoka Ramsey staff to review the plan and the options and the possibilities. So this evening, we'd like to present the following courses for continuing on our path towards offering that full complement of the AA degree here on site. So here you can see the different courses that we would be adding. Introduction to Art, an English course, Short Stories, College Algebra I, Interpretive Chemistry, General Physics, and American Politics and Government. So the suspended.
We're excited that we were able this year to add a theater program at the high school, and one of the courses that might have a little overlap, and we have a theater teacher now, is we are now going to just, it's, it's a deletion, which is, I'm sorry, a suspension, which is communications art, but students have the opportunity to go right into our theater program with a very similar course offering. So that is why this one's suspended, but students still have that opportunity to take that course in our theater program.
So moving to elementary, this is really looking at a replication of a program. We piloted the LEAP Multi-Age Gifted and Talented Program Classroom at Highland for two years and really looked at the data. And based on the really positive data, we would like to propose to replicate the LEAP program in either one or both of our other elementary schools. We're currently in the process of our initial gifted testing at the elementary level this week, and so based on the capacity and the enrollment numbers, we will, we'll be able to make that determination if we can move to one or both other elementary schools. We have seen with the Highland program, an increase in people coming back, either returning to Columbia Heights as a resident or open enrolling from other districts specifically for the program. So we've seen an uptick in enrollment through this program. Are there any questions?
And this comes back on the 20th.
28th, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Electronic Application System for Indian Education. Xena.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here to present the Electronic Application System for Indian Education update. Of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation is really focused on the core value of community. This is an information item, just an update, there will be no governance question. So just a quick note that we've always thought of American Indian education programs in Title VII with our new federal law, Every Student Succeeds Act, that's been moved into Title VI, so just put that out there. The federal Indian education funding really has three phases or three steps. The first, which is due, coming up in December 7th, is simply to log on to the system and provide our demographics and then list the person responsible for the program. So that's Superintendent Kathy Kelly and myself as that. Then we follow through in Phase Two with the Parent Committee and submitting our plan and objectives. And then at the end of the year, really, next fall, is the certification. So I want to report to the board this evening that our 2016-17 Federal American Indian Program has been fully certified, and so we'll move on to next year.
Well done.
So just a few quick updates on our American Indian Education Program. We really have two different programs happening, the federal and the state. So with the federal, for many years, we formed a consortium with Spring Lake Park and Fridley. That consortium has been dissolved, and so Columbia Heights is standing on its own for the federal programming. We have therefore established a new Columbia Heights Parent Committee as part of the requirement, and that committee in June set goals and objectives for the funding, and I'll show you those in a minute. For the state programming, it's based, as is almost everything else these days, on our World's Best Workforce Goal areas. That newly established Parent Committee can be combined with the federal committee, so we don't have to have two separate committees, as long as we keep it straight and organize that one is federal and one is the state's. We're able to do that. The committee has been so collaborative and so positive and really well-attended, so that's been great. So collaboratively set goals and objectives. The plan was already approved by the Department of Education. We didn't get asked to amend anything or revise anything. We do have a tribal consultation coming up early in December. So quickly going through, sharing with you some of the goals. Of course, for the state funding, we follow the World's Best Workforce Goal areas, so pre-K and K. The parents said we want 100% of our American Indian kindergarteners to be proficient on the sight word assessment. Of course, at the meeting, our teacher representative, Sarah Hamph, a kindergarten teacher from North Park, was there and could tell the whole committee all about how we assess kindergartners and sight words and whatnot, and so she was really helpful with this one. We also provide a fee waiver for our pre-K3 programming, which is normally, has a fee to it, so American Indian students and families who have that need, identified need, this funding can help offset the cost for pre-K3. We know how critical it is to have high-quality early childhood programming. The second goal area is literacy for third grade. The Parent Committee wants to increase our current American Indian third grade scores by 20%, so we have a lot of strategies to do that. One thing that the, one thing that the Department of Education staff noted and really liked about our plan is that we weren't, we don't say this, the use of the American Indian funds is what's going to do, you know, make all the difference. We're really listing in our strategies, we're using general ed funding, we're using other funds to braid those funds and support so that all of our funding streams are supporting all of our students. So they really did appreciate that, so it's listed there for you. I'll come back later on in the school year to give an update on that press, class-wide intervention. So far, first quarter data is looking really interesting, so I want to share that with the board coming up. Closing achievement gaps for American Indian students. So you can see there decrease, the gap to 10% for math and 2% for reading and the strategies for doing that. We have a American Indian elder, Valerie Larson, on staff. She's check and connect trained, and she's already been in and out of the high school and the middle school and well, all the schools, really checking in on particular students and working on family engagement. The American Indian Parent Committee is planning a family potluck coming up on, I want to say, November 28th. That's going to be a busy night for all of us, right? College and career readiness, this is measured by the ACT or SAT, any advanced assessment. So ACT higher, 23 or higher for students who are taking it. We have four identified students in 11th grade this year who will be taking that, so our check and connect specialist is definitely checking in with those students and supporting them. Graduating from high school, 100%. We've had 100% American Indian graduation rate for the last few years. We plan on maintaining that 100%. And then switching over to the federal funding, again, this plan was And then switching over to the federal funding, um, again, this plan was completed in June, provide, the committee wanted to provide culturally responsive education for American Indian students to meet the academic needs. So overall, um, the state funding provides about forty thousand dollars. The federal, uh, provides about five and a half thousand dollars. You can see the breakdown there.
What?
Good to hear that all the certifications got in place for you guys. Well done. Know that wasn't easy.
I really appreciate that you have the achievement gap in there explicitly listed as something to work towards.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Xena.
Thanks.
Oh, hang on. Laura does.
I, I just really want to thank you for, for all the work that you've put into this. I, I think that, um, that the supports that we're giving to our students in this school are, um, are, it, it's, it's, it's really incredible when you hear from, uh, other, other districts and other students that they're not getting the whole child kind of experience. And the fact that, um, all of our students in the schools as well, um, also have some of these, um, it's not just a closed group, it, it's very inclusive. So I, I really appreciate, I know this was a lot of work, so, I, and I really appreciate everybody who put everything into it, and the parent committee is just amazing. So I, I'm just very, I'm, I'm really excited about this, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Xena. Okay, next up will be the introduction of our Director of Finance and Operations.
Mr. Chair and members, um, tonight I would like to formally introduce the Director of Finance and Operations, um, Ms. Christine Carr. Uh, Director Carr is a seasoned administrator with many years of financial, um, and administrative management experience. Uh, she also is, um, uh, very schooled in strategic planning and operations management. Uh, we are going to really appreciate her this year because she's adept at project management when it comes to software conversions, and since we're moving from ties to other choices, um, we are, um, hoping that Christine will help us, or excuse me, Director Carr will help us lead the way on that. Uh, and as the superintendent of the, of the admin team, I feel that the district is very fortunate to have attracted her to our district and to our team, and I believe that the district will be really well-served, um, with her working in our school district. And tonight, I've, since she was going to present on a few things, I just asked, um, Director Carr if she might just say a few words about herself, and then, um, if you have questions or, um, words of welcome, we would entertain them.
Thank you, Superintendent Kelly. Um, Mr. Chair, school board members, Superintendent Kelly, um, I'm happy to be here. And, um, a little bit about myself, you know, you've seen my resume, but basically, um, I'm s- accounting, um, background, and I have CPA, and I have my MBA from, um, St. Thomas. I've, um, been in school finance for eighteen and a half years. I was formerly at Intermediate nine sixteen, so I've worked with, um, Laura quite a bit at, at that district. And prior to that, I worked in healthcare industry, um, for most of my career, and as a state auditor for a few years, um, so that I could get my license as a CPA. I'm just very happy to be here. I do love projects, and I, I do love software conversions, so we'll see how this goes. Usually there's a little longer timeframe to do it, but we'll figure it out. So, we've been having a lot of meetings, um, on that and a lot of demos, and it's, um, you know, Brian is fabulous to work with. I have a great tech director here, and so we'll get the job done. So, I'm very happy to be here, and thank you for your kind words.
Welcome to Columbia Heights.
Thank you. I met most of you at the, um, Alumni Foundation Dinner, so that was a very nice event.
I never actually imagined the sentence, "I do love software conversions."
My first job out of college was actually at an accounting software company in Fargo, Great Plains Software. They were, um, purchased by Microsoft eventually, so I do, I do like it.
But we're glad you do like that.
Yes. Okay. Well, I'll talk to you maybe in six months, but I do.
Well, welcome again.
Thank you.
And as long as we got you in the hot seat.
You're up next for, um-
OPEB.
The, the OPEB Trust.
Mr. Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Kelly, um, this, uh, item tonight is informational only. The governance work will be, uh, resolution on the November twenty-eighth board meeting to, um, approve the resolution, uh, requested by Wells Fargo Trust. In October of two thousand nine, the school board established, um, this irrevocable trust for OPEB benefits for certain employees. It's basically to pay post-employment, um, mostly healthcare benefits to certain staff. The attached resolution is from Wells Fargo, um, to change the name to Authorized Entity Representatives to Catherine Kelly and Christine Carr. Um, and it's, it's, um, needed because of the change in the Director of Finance and Operations, so to take Mr. Holmgren off the list as an authorized representative and to add my name. Any questions? Okay.
That's a resolution.
That'll be a resolution on the twenty-
On, to November twenty eighth.
And then next up would be the police liaison contract.
Mr. Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Kelly, um, this action also is, um, an informational item, and the governance action will be, um, to take action on the resolution to approve these contracts on the November twenty-eighth board meeting. Um, these school liaison officer, um, contracts have been in place for several years with, um, in cooperation with the City of Columbia Heights, and these two contracts are to place an officer at the high school and an officer at the middle school, um, for the calendar year two thousand, uh, January two thousand eighteen through December two thousand eighteen. Um, it's based on actual costs of, um, salary and fringe benefits as set by the City of Columbia Heights, um, with a two percent increase on miscellaneous items, which would, which are very little, um, few supplies, that type of thing. And the contract was included in the board packet.
And this contract is similar to other previous years?
Right. The language on the contract's exactly the same, so there are no changes there.
Any other questions?
Questions?
And then this will be something that'll be coming back for approval as well.
On November twenty eighth. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up will be our action items. Um, we've got first up is the canvass returns of the school board, special election.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the resolution canvassing the results of the November seventh special election.
Standard question, do you believe their ballots to be accurate in the form that they're showing here?
Yes, I do.
Anybody have any specific questions? So actually, let's start with the motion to move it forward, then we'll have discussion.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty? Okay. Now a discussion. Any questions or discussion regarding the canvassing? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, Natty, it's a roll call to approve it.
Palmer?
Aye.
Asamra?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next on. Next up, our second reading of board policies. Six oh one, which is district curriculum instructional goals. Uh, six twelve point one, development of parental involvement policies for Title One program. Six thirteen, which is graduation requirements. Six sixteen, system accountability. Six eighteen, the assessment of student achievement. Six nineteen, staff developments for standards. Uh, these policies appeared on the October twenty-fourth meeting for a first reading. Um, Superintendent Kelly, has there been any questions, comments, or input since then?
Mr. Chair and members, we, um, the superintendent's office have received no questions, comments, or, uh, concerns about this, and in checking with the management team, they have not either.
Okay. Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Is that hollow? Discussion. Hearing none. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Uh, next up is board topics. Somebody have anything for board topics?
I guess a couple of events coming up.
Yeah.
Sense and Sensibility over at the high school. That's already been mentioned a couple times.
It's this Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Seven o'clock.
Seven PM.
Seven PM. And of course, um, there's also the concerts over at the high school, uh, coming up on Monday. I believe that's the twentieth, if I'm correct about my date there.
Which concerts?
Band and choir, I think.
The band and choir.
That's good to know.
Yes. So that'll be a very full evening. It's always a good time.
When is that?
Twentieth. I, I, I'm not sure what time it starts at.
I'm not either.
If it's band and choir, I imagine it's probably a little bit earlier than seven.
Yeah. That'd be good to know. My daughter should have probably told me that.
Yeah. I, I never get information until the last minute from, uh, from mine, so, um, I don't know if any other events are coming up.
FAFSA night is tomorrow night, um, for anyone that's listening, which they probably won't hear it in time, but I'm here. Or see it online.
FAFSA night?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Anybody else for events? As long as we're covering events. Um, the only one I know of or can think of off the top of my head is the, uh, City of Columbia Heights, the, I believe it's Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be coming into town on December ninth. Um, it's at the little Lions Park off of Thirty-seventh and it's between Stinson and what's Arthur there. They did it last year, there was close to three thousand people there. It was actually quite an event, so, um, just mark your calendars, they'll be coming through again there, so.
The Taste of Columbia Heights is November seventeenth.
Thank you.
I have this excellent memory.
Taste of Columbia Heights is November seventeenth.
Taste of Columbia Heights is on Friday, yeah?
Yep.
That's on Friday.
Thank you.
Any other board topics? The only one I guess I have is just a comment, and it's a personal comment, is, um, I, you know, as a board, we elected to put that referendum on the ballot, and I saw a lot of people work really, really hard, um, to have that be successful. I'm thankful for all the efforts that were put into it, and, uh, just express my personal disappointment that it didn't go the way that we hoped it would. Um, but again, it was, uh, not for lack of people trying, so, um, that's my personal commentary for the night, so.
Agreed.
I guess, I just want to make one other comment, is just that, um, there's a lot of people in this district that really do support our teachers, and I think they're